All rise. Hearing, hearing. Hamlin County Commission Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Howard Shipley presiding. Please remain standing.
This time, I'd like to call to order the March 18th, 2021, Hamlin County Legislative Body, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Jim Step to lead us in our prayer, please.
Before we pray, I'll read a verse, please. Proverbs, Chapter 7, verse 6. It says, "Our children's children are the crown of old man, and their glory of children are their fathers." Just remember this as we walk through our lives. Let us pray. Our most precious Lord and Father in heaven, we come to you tonight, Lord, and you'll lead us in God's hands, and you'll have us to do, Lord, the job that we have been elected to do, Lord. We pray for each and every one of us here in this room, Lord, and most of our Lord, pray for ourselves, but pray that everyone seek Christ in their life. Lead us in God's hands, Lord, and you'll have us together, with Jesus' name, as precious name that we know. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Step. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Goin, please lead us in our prayers.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I want to remind the commissioners to please turn your mics on. Unfortunately, our computer is down, so most of what we're going to be doing tonight is going to be offline, so I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the rolls this time.
Jeff Aker?
Here.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Here.
Thomas Doughty?
Here.
Jim Owens?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Here.
Joe Hudson?
Thank you all.
Ali Orne?
Here.
Mike Reed?
Wayne Neesmith?
Here.
Howard Shipley?
Here.
Jim Step?
Here.
We do have a quorum present, so we are open for business. At this time, we would like to recess the Hamlin County Legislative Body and reconvene as a beer board to consider the beer license for Kenny's Market located on Copper Ridge Road. Is the owner or the operator of this business present? If not, then I would like to ask if anyone here has, wants to speak in favor or against the beer permit request for Kenny's Market. Please come to the podium at this time and share your concerns.
I'm not just against heads, I'm against all of them. We got so many on each corner now, we're lucky if we make it back home alive. I got hit by one, got my nose broke, my eye hurt, just after getting me a milkshake. I would have never thought Hamlin County would have had beer on every corner.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission regarding this beer request? Anybody else? Hearing no one else, then we're going to close the public comment section for, as a beer board, and reconvene as the Hamlin County Legislative Body. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion dealing with the request for beer license for Kenny's Market located on Copper Ridge Road in Morristown.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Goin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Horner. Okay. Any discussion?
Chairman, I have a question. It's an on and off premises permit. I assume they've met all requirements as far as the on-site?
From the documentation that we, that has been given to us in our packet, yes, they've met all the requirements.
I just find it odd to have a on-site permit right at the head of a neighborhood.
Yeah. Anyone else? Any other discussion? If not, then all of those in favor of granting the beer permit, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, let it be known by saying no.
No.
Let's do a roll call, please.
Jeff Aker?
No.
Chris Cutshaw?
No.
Randy DeBoer?
No.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Tim Owens?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
No.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Ali Orne?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Step?
No.
Taylor Ward. Okay, so we got one, two, three, four, five. We have six no's and five ayes.
Okay, the motion fails for a lack of a majority vote. Okay? Proceeding on to the next item of business. You have before you the confirmation of the appointment of City Council's recommendation for K-Center to be on the 911 Board. We dealt with this during our last meeting, but unfortunately, we did not get a second on that motion. So it's before us again, so the chair would entertain a motion that we confirm the appointment of K-Center to the 911 Board.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Doughty moves, and Commissioner Hahn seconds it. Any discussion? I don't think we need discussion on this. All those in favor of confirming the appointment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by saying no. Hearing no no's, the motion is approved. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Jim Step of the Calendar and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 5A, approval of consent calendar items, I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Aker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, approving the consent calendar, let it be known by saying no. Hearing no no's, the motion is approved.
Item 5B, approval of the regular calendar items, I put that in form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve the regular calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Aker. Any discussion? Hearing none, then, all of those who are in favor of approving the regular calendar, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by saying no. The motion is approved.
All I have, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Chairman Step. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Commissioner DeBoer moves that we approve the consent calendar. Commissioner Step seconds the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of approving the consent calendar, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by saying no. Hearing no no's, then the motion is approved. At this time, we will receive comments from the public on any item that is on tonight's agenda. Please come to the podium, state your name, and share your comments on agenda items only.
Gwen Holden, 8150 West Point Drive. Down on number 11, number B, or number A, bid tabulation manufactured steel detention sales. Okay. I'm addressing this to you, Mr. Shipley, since you're the chairman of the commission. I would like to know why, and I would like for you to ask him, why Mr. Horner, my county commissioner, whom I voted for, did not answer my emails that I sent him about this, wanting to know about it. I had four questions that I asked him, but he never answered my emails. Now, since you, since he did not answer my emails, Mr. Shipley, he will not get my vote if he runs again, because I am his constituent, and I'm paying for that jail and these sales, and I need to know, what I need to know, when I send him my email, which he did not return. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission on agenda items?
My name is Linda Nowey, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. I would like to discuss the jail as well, your item on that. The jail problem is real, and we all know that, and there are multiple solutions out there. The current four-story jail design with its elaborate new justice center costs millions more than a simple one-story jail with pods, with a complete renovation of the existing justice center. I firmly believe we could save anywhere from $25 to $30 million if we changed our design to the safer one-level jail. And if we only saved 20, I think the taxpayers would be happy with that as well. And if you wanted to, you could then start setting money aside for a new justice center. Instead of always less going to debt to get something, do like families, we would like to do and should do, set it aside, and then you've got the money later. But as I said, with the jail, we have not looked at all options. The handling of the jail justice center project has been an utter failure. The whole process has been haphazard, piecemeal, and unprofessional. Along the way, this commission has violated Robert's Rules of Order, the 10-day rule that most of you voted for when you were on commission, review of, the 10-day rule for review of contracts, the constitutional rights of citizens, and your rule for hiring professionals like architects, and I'm referring here to the Hale House. All this chaos shows extreme incompetence at best, and just this week, you have your incompetence on the jail cells. There's a lot to learn about how do you go to Madison County? Who gave us the name of Madison County to go to? Who do we know, or who does somebody know down there? And were we comparing apples to apples? Was Madison County violating the law on sales tax? I don't know. There are a lot of interesting things. You can do the sales tax situation like you're talking about if the, also the county's forces are installing something. But I don't think you'll ever find, I don't know of any situation where a contractor, you can buy it, use the sales tax, then hand it off to a contractor to install, and that's exactly what you found out, and that's exactly what Mr. Neesmith said in February 18th, when many of you over here jumped on him and said, "You're wrong." He was right.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Barney Ballington, 317 Stebefield Street, Whitesburg. I have to follow along the same guidelines as Linda. This deal, how the mayor came up with saving sales tax on the jail cells, it worries me, and it makes me wonder and question whether anybody has the common sense to actually put this jail together. If he could save sales tax on the purchase of the jail cells, why couldn't he have saved sales tax by the county purchasing the concrete, the block, the brick, the plumbing, the electrical, everything to do with the building, stands to reason? So why pick out just the jail cells? Where did he get that idea? These kind of things makes us really worry about what this jail is going to be when it actually does get built. Is it going to fall in on itself? I mean, it's, the site it's being built on is unstable as can be, as the old jail has shown. There's just nothing about this jail that the people of this county want, even though we realize we need a jail and we need it desperately. But we need something that's put together with common sense and integrity, and with people and their needs in mind. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes.
My name's Ed Nigrean. I live at 4981 Cameron Road. I'd like to resign the same opinion. This jail has not been constructed, or however you want to put it. It's not been bided, it's not been handled in a professional manner. I was here when the remark was, "Majons didn't have to pay sales tax." Don't take this the wrong way, we run a business. We have to pay it. What makes you think that you can exempt anyone else? And ever who the person was, and yes, I do know who the person was, I'm just being polite, who told you folks about it? You need to back up and tell him that he needs to get his facts straight. If you'll call Tennessee Revenue, they'll give him the paperwork, he won't have to take a verbal opinion. This jail is a mistake just waiting to happen. You're going to have more inmate lawsuits, you're going to have less safety for the officers, you're going to have to have more people to run it, which is going to be a bigger labor bill. And any of you that run a business in here knows that your labor bill is the biggest ticket item of your business. So how can you not look at this? You're 14 sensible people. Why will you not take and step back and look? Most, some of you are my age. Why don't you consider your neighbors, what kind of burden you're putting on them? Do you really want your neighbors to lose their homes over a tax bill that you've been the pusher of? Maybe I'm getting a little too straight for you folks. But you need to step back and think about it. You're not spending your money, you're spending our money. And I personally think you're using harsh judgment. By what I've seen and heard so far, I wonder, I wonder what you're thinking? I wonder what kind of educational process you folks followed? When I went to school, two and two made four. By what I've heard, it doesn't make four anymore, it makes two again. So please, be sensible. Go back to the rules that this commission has put in place for the safety of the taxpayers, and I'm talking about the 10-day rule. I'm talking about looking at the one-level jail. Four-story jail, I read not too long ago, you're just talking about not finishing the third level. All right? By math that you just gave me, it takes three levels to have 600 prisoners. Four, uh, two levels, 400, is what I've read. And if I'm wrong, please correct me, gentlemen and ladies. But you just need to wake up and smell the coffee, and some of you need to go back to school, and some of you were high school. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
No.
Darrell Arwood, L. Road in Morristown. There've been several people trying to tell our group, "If those jails are done deal, y'all might as well quit fighting it." There've been a lot of comments, come from people over here, that, "Oh, no, it's not 75 million." I was sitting here that night when y'all talked about the bonds. The mayor told you, "We're going to get 85 million in bonds, 10 million of it for West High School, 75 million for the jail." Mr. Doughty made a remark that night, how he wouldn't vote for it, and even apologized to the school, because it's not nothing to do with the school. I just don't want to vote for it because it's tied to this jail. We sit here and heard you do it, then you sit over and tell us, "Oh, no, we're wrong, we're wrong, it's not 75." That's what you said right up here. That's what the mayor said up here and told you. Those numbers we get are coming from y'all. And as far as it being a done deal, I remember back in the early '70s, they talked about something that was just a done deal. No way could stop it. A little place called Miller's Ditch, and y'all are working your way into another Miller's Ditch because you won't listen to the people. At this time, it'll be national media when it comes down to that point. So if y'all keep this up, that's what you're going to push the people into, having a Miller's Ditch Part II right here. Hope it don't come to that, but y'all are the only ones that can stop it from coming to that.
Thank you for your comments.
Karen Arwood, 1501 L. Road. Okay. Once again, about the jail, that, um, for well over a year now, maybe a year and a half or longer, this jail has been nothing but a goat rope from the very beginning. Before it gets any deeper and all that, put a halt to this. There are a lot of questions that you need to be asking, that you need to be getting information, be doing research, a whole, a whole lot of this. We don't know. And there's been things that have come to light just recently that, quite frankly, in, in setting up, designing a building and doing, and for construction purposes, there are things that have come to light that, that should have been known from the get-go, like the foundation, the support, a lot of things. It's not too late to halt right now, temporarily halt. Ask a lot of questions, be doing research, coming up, coming up with a lot of questions. We do need a jail. I'm not, and I don't think any of the people that I am a member of COAG with are against a jail. It's not that. We do need, we do need a new one, a better facility, but a newer, better facility is not going to do us a bit of good if we can't use it and use it safely. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
One other thing, just real quick.
Oh, okay.
And let's not have another Miller's Ditch. Stop now. Let's get a bunch of things answered. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Yes, sir.
My name is Tony Schrazulo, 609 East Louise Avenue. First, I'm going to start off with reading out a letter from a couple that owns two properties right across from where the new facility is supposed to be built, off of West 5th North Street. It says that their work schedule prohibits attendance to this meeting addressing the commissioners with a letter in regards to the new Justice Center. Our rental properties are located across from the Justice Center, and we have concerns locating the new Justice, concerns locating the new Justice Center at the current location. Some tenants have concerns, and if they move out, not sure our apartments will attract other tenants. The property values will be affected negatively for property owners in this area, decreasing values more. There are better locations for the new Justice Center inside of, than inside of a residential and historical area of town. This site is next to the Rose Center where different events are held that attract visitors, and a larger facility will not have positive reflection for this area. Please take in consideration the residents in this area and the impact this has on them as well as property owners. Thank you. So that is just one of them, and I was running a little behind today, and I meant to grab all my paperwork, and I did, but it's sitting on the dashboard of the truck. So that is just one of the letters. I don't have the list of signatures that I gathered that other day, but you had spoken, Joe, to that couple on the phone. You had said that they reached out to you. There's many others that are like that, and they would like your all's attention. I have heard, in the past few months of me coming to these meetings, a push, a push, and a push on this multi-story facility, but I've never heard not one negative reason why we don't want a single-story facility in a different location, or a single-story facility, period. Nobody has ever, in my five, four, five months coming to these meetings, has addressed why that is such a negative thing, and nobody's had a positive thing about it either. Therefore, we're not on a single-minded level here. We're on a team playing field. It's everybody together. Everybody thinks the same way, nobody has any oppositions, and it shouldn't be like that. Last year, there was numerous things that had to be gone back over and rethought, rerepresented, and that was shown in the tax deal, that was shown in the foundation, and there's other issues that have came up in response to this. If there's that many things, you know, I don't even think a 10-day...
Thank you, Tony.
...time to look is enough. We need 30 days, because you all aren't on top of it.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Anyone else? Hearing no other comments, then we'll proceed. The chair at this time will recognize Chairman Randy DeBoer of the Audit Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On 8A, acceptance of the Hamlin County Government Audit for Fiscal Year ending June 30th of 2020, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
So moved.
We have a second from Commissioner Chris Cutshaw. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, then, all those in favor of accepting the Hamlin County Audit, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by saying no. Hearing no, no's, the motion is approved. Thank you, Chairman DeBoer. Now, we're going to recognize you as chairman of the Finance Committee.
Okay. And 9A, the monthly checks, and this is the approval of the monthly checks, and I put it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion to approve the monthly checks. We have a second from Commissioner Step over here. Any discussion about the monthly checks? Hearing none, then, Madam Kirk, call the roll.
Jeff Aker?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Tim Owens?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Ali Orne?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Sorry.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Step?
Yes.
Okay, it's 12, yay, zero, nine.
The motion is approved.
Number 9B, Budget Amendments. Number one, Hamlin County Board of Education, Budget Amendment Number Six, increase of This has been approved by the school board, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hahn, any discussion?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any county responsibility on this?
There is no maintenance of effort, if that's your question, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Jeff Aker?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Tim Owens?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Ali Orne?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Step?
Yes.
It's 12, yay, zero, nine.
The motion is approved.
Number 9B2, this is for Fund 101 CARES Act COVID Grant, in 968,545, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Goin. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just, just want to let the people that, that here don't know what all this is, this is 968,000 dollars. This is money that's come into the school system through grants, through COVID. It's their money that they, they're putting there for the school system, so it doesn't, it doesn't cost the county taxpayer a penny.
So it doesn't, it doesn't cost the county taxpayer a penny. I just wanted a good idea. Lot of faces look
Chairman.
puzzled out there.
Yes, sir.
I'm finished.
It doesn't go.
That, that money's not for the school system, that was for the general, that was for the county.
General fund of the county. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Jeff Aker.
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBord.
Yes.
Thomas Doughty.
Yes.
Tim Goens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Hudson. Ali Arne One.
Yes.
Wayne Niesman.
Yes.
Howard Shipley.
Yes.
Jim Steph.
Yes.
Okay, that's twelve, Y zero A.
The motion is approved.
Item nine B three, Fund One-Sixteen CARES Act COVID nineteen money, it is four thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-five cents, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goin. Any discussion? Hearing none, discussion then, let's call the roll, please.
Jeff Aker.
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBord.
Yes.
Thomas Doughty.
Yes.
Tim Goens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Hudson.
Yes.
Ali Arne One.
Yes.
Wayne Niesman.
Yes.
Howard Shipley.
Yes.
Jim Steph.
Yes.
Twelve, Y zero A.
The motion is approved.
Item nine B four, Fund One-Thirty-one CARES Act COVID money, forty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cutshaw over here. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, uh, call the roll, please.
Jeff Aker.
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBord.
Yes.
Thomas Doughty.
Yes.
Tim Goens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe, Joe Hudson.
Yes.
Ali Arne One.
Yes.
Wayne Niesman.
Yes.
Howard Shipley.
Yes.
Jim Steph.
Yes.
Twelve, Y zero A.
The motion is approved.
Item nine B five, Fund One-O-One for County Clerk's Office, one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and that's for a printer, and I put it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hahn, any discussion? Hearing none, let's call the roll, please.
Jeff Aker.
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBord.
Yes.
Thomas Doughty.
Yes.
Tim Goens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Hudson.
Yes.
Ali Arne One.
Yes.
Wayne Niesman.
Yes.
Howard Shipley.
Yes.
Jim Steph.
Yes.
Twelve, Y zero A.
The motion is approved.
Item number nine B six, Fund One-O-One for County Clerk's Office, ten thousand dollars for security cameras, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? There's a second from Commissioner Niesman. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, call the roll, please.
Jeff Aker.
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBord.
Yes.
Thomas Doughty.
Yes.
Tim Goens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Hudson.
Ali Arne One. Yes.
Wayne Niesman.
Yes.
Howard Shipley.
Yes.
Jim Steph.
Yes.
Twelve, Y zero A.
The motion is approved.
Number nine B seven, Fund One-O-One for Victim Assistance, eleven thousand, two sixty, and this is a new grant, and I put it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Commissioner Hahn. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Jeff Aker.
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw.
Aye.
Randy DeBord.
Yes.
Thomas Doughty.
Yes.
Tim Goens.
Aye.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Hudson.
Ali Arne One. Yes.
Wayne Niesman.
Yes.
Howard Shipley.
Yes.
Jim Steph.
Yes.
Twelve, Y zero A.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, DeBord. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Tim Goin of the Public Service Committee.
I call the Public Service Committee to order, uh, ten A surplus items from the Hamlin County Sheriff's Department, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Hahn, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying no. Hearing no knows, the motion is approved.
Item ten B, surplus item from the Hamlin County Garbage Department, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second from Commissioner Steph, uh, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, then, all those in favor of this item, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying no. Hearing no knows, the motion is approved.
Item ten C, County Inmate Labor Usage Twenty-Twenty-One Agreement, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second. Bobby Hahn.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, then, all those in favor of this agreement, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying no. Hearing no knows, then the motion is approved.
Chairman, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Goin. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Tim Horner of the Justice Center Jail Project Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item eleven A, Bid Tabulation, Manufactured Steel Detention Sales, this is to reject the bids per the recommendation from Mayor Britton and to instruct Mosley Architects to furniture detention, furnish detention sales within the general contractors when the bid opens, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
There's a second from Commissioner Goin, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, then, all those in favor of rejecting the bids, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, let it be known by saying no. Hearing no no votes, then the motion is approved.
Eleven B, Justice Center Project Bid Update, uh, Tony Pettit with Burwill's here.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm gonna go back, all the way back to when Mosley Architects got permission to bid and kinda update you. If I read something off, you got a question, uh, go up your hand and stop me and interrupt it, or save the question to the end. But, um, just kinda update you. January fourteenth. On January fourteenth, we had a meeting, and if I get too detailed, push me along too. On January the fourteenth, we had a meeting with Helen Ross McNabb, uh, Mosley Architect McGill Associates, to discuss how this construction would affect the neighbor's property there and what impacts it would have on it. We talked about the dumpster location, entrances, and what all would happen during construction of the Justice Center. January the twentieth, we, uh, we viewed the submissions of the qualifications of the general contractors. We went out prior to that and got solicitations for general contractors. We received, uh, five general contractors, uh, qualifications. Mosley determined that there's four qualified, the one that did not get qualified had not had that significant project on a justice center. The projects weren't just long enough. So, yeah, four bidders, and, um, they are Veil and Associates out of Brentonwood, Tennessee, Blaine Constructors out of Knoxville, Tennessee, Branch Builds out of Roanoke, Virginia, and English Construction out of Lynchburg, Virginia. Those documents were issued to go out for bid, uh, January the twenty-fifth. On the third of February, uh, we had a meeting on the distilled detention sale bid package. And, uh, we needed to have that bid in time, we anticipated that needed to be bid in time to allow us to notify the general contractors bidding the thing, to allow them to have the proper installation of those sales. On the ninth of February, we had a pre-bid conference in this room, uh, excuse me, in this room, led by Mosley Architecture. Each pre-qualified general contractor attending, either one, at least one person, I think we had several from each contractor, and we had several subcontractors in attendance. During that meeting, we went over the bid documents, uh, in general, and bid procedures, and, uh, we, at that point in time, discussed postponing the bid date due to some information and some denders that were forthcoming. During the bid comments, and Mosley Architects getting a lot of questions, uh, coming in from the general contractors, and issuing, uh, these answers to these questions or clarifications to the documents by denda. But during this time, um, we had a group that was, uh, really questioning the, uh, deep foundations, and, uh, so, uh, we had a meeting on February the fifteenth to generally discuss about the deep foundations. The deep foundations, which are micropiles, were a designated design. And our estimates previously had said they were, uh, the number on the drawings were eight hundred and eighty-one, uh, deep foundations, and, uh, there was a discussion where we may be able to save a significant amount of money if we did not have a designated design for the foundations, but rather design them in-house with the engineering of Mosley Architects. So we followed that up on February the eighteenth, and at that point in time, uh, went over what we thought we could, uh, save in, as far as dollars and the amount of designated design versus design cost of the micropiles, and determined that we could save, we were hoping to save about two million dollars off the project cost. So we proceeded at that point in time to, to design, Mosley designed the deep foundations, and, um, that resulted in us postponing the project from, uh, March the ninth to March the thirtieth. So, uh, that allowed the consultants to finish that design and get it back out to the contractors, four general contractors that were bidding it, and let them, uh, prepare their bids with that design. I can skip ahead and say that, you know, the, on March tenth, the micropile design was complete, and it wasn't as much as we hoped, but they eliminated a hundred and fifty-four micropiles. And, uh, for an estimated savings, and this is going off estimates of previously of eight hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And, um, so it was well worth the exercise. And they also were allowed to get rid of what we call a shear key or a lug in the concrete deep foundations that had some constructability issues with it. And that, they were able to eliminate that by using battered micropiles. And, uh, probably saved, and, and also while they were, uh, the designer, the consultant also looked at the thickness of the pile caps, what the micropiles are underneath, and then you have the pile caps, we were able to thin them out, so we're estimating the total savings on the thing was about a million to a million-two, that exercise, off the project. Trying to read around my glasses. Also, I wanted to tell you that it probably saved about a month of construction time. That's an estimate. Skip back up to the March of fifth, and we conducted, uh, a, uh, a Zoom meeting to discuss the results of the detention sales. We had two bids, uh, two qualified bidders, and the bids were spread fairly wide between the two. Alternatives of the one bidder didn't might make any sense when we were looking at it, and the other bidder possibly was not properly licensed to bid the project. So, um, the group agreed to find out if the scope was correct, if the high bidder, and that was the correct bidder, uh, was properly licensed, and if the low bidder would allow their bid number, if correct, to be assigned to the general contractor, and, um, the termination of the sales tax saving still not been, uh, settled at that point. At, did find out, uh, post-meeting, the high bidder was not properly licensed, he is now. Took him a couple, three weeks after it was brought to his attention. And the low bidder had a mistake of leaving out basically the second floor, a hundred sales. Soon after that, it was determined that the sales tax savings could not be realized. And at that point in time, we, the team made a recommendation that we reject the bids, and the general contractors would include supplying the detention sales in the respective bids. All right, I'll keep going, 'cause I gotta be some questions there, okay? So, uh, the micro, the micropiles on March tenth were, uh, were completed, and Mosley, Mosley Architects designed them along with their structural engineer. Again, I said, I skipped ahead to this already, but, you know, that eliminated a hundred and fifty-four micropiles. And it also changed some thicknesses and stuff, but about a million-two, we think, maybe a million savings there. On March twelfth, Mosley Architects was issued addendum number four with the micropile design, uh, revisions. And also, now the steel cells are in the scope of work for the general contractors. That helps the counties, if you can't realize the savings, the county takes on less, a whole lot less risk. You're not taking any risk now. Whereas before, if we had the sales, we could save the sales tax, it was worth the risk. But now that you're not gonna have the sell, sales tax savings, it's not worth taking on the risk of you purchasing the steel cells. So that's the reason why, another reason why we decided to reject bids and put them back into general contractors. Now he's in charge of scheduling, shop drawings, delays, it's all his, it's all his, uh, responsibility. And that's all I have. Questions?
Questions?
Sure.
With the amount of time, was that figured in on the million, the million-two? The amount of time that we're gonna save, was that money also figured in on top of that million?
No, it's just hard dollars for savings of the concrete, and generally, the, the, uh, micropiles are about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that.
And about how much time do you think that would save us on construction?
About thirty days.
Forty days?
Of construction time. Mr. Niesman?
I've got, uh, three or four for you.
Okay.
I think you've answered, you've answered some of them coming along the line, but, uh, micropods has to do with the foundation.
Micropiles are a system of deep foundations.
What is a micropod?
Well, you have, the, the most common, and University of Tennessee's using this, is drilled caissons or drilled piers, and you've seen these in pictures and stuff where it's a thirty-six inch, I've never seen one thirty, all the way up to a sixty-five or seventy-two inch round column underground. So these micropiles is technology that's been around, well, as long as I have, so it's been around forty-something years. It used to be a new technology, but it's basically, and the majority of these are eight, are nine-inch, uh, in diameter columns. And some of them are seven, some of them are nine with reinforcement in it, and they go down to bedrock. So you have, instead of one great big old caisson, you have several micropiles, instead of, I guess, a major pile. It goes down to bedrock, so they're, they're faster, and they're more efficient in getting the support of the foundation. So, did that answer your question?
Okay, I think we talked a while ago about the
Right.
about Colgate.
Yeah.
They went in there and put
They, they had a floor support and all that.
They had four-foot thing, and it's all, the whole, the whole floor of
Their floor with
The whole floor is sitting on these things. If y'all seen that building, then, it's a monster of a building, but that, that was one question I, I had. Let me just get on with these, some of these others. You explain what a micropod is. How many micropods are required on this?
Micropile.
Micropile, P-I-L-E.
It's just a mini drilled caisson. They're filled with concrete, and they come up to your pile cap, which is a foundation, and then pile cap rests on it, and that's your compressive strength's taken down to the bedrock.
Pile cap with rebar?
Pile cap is a foundation, yeah, it's a rebar.
Okay, that's, that's one thing I had, let's see. Before, we had it for the, when we was gonna buy the jail sales and save on tax money, we, we had it for, uh, I'm trying to figure out how I wanna write it, put it down, we had Lost my place on here. We had it for the contractor was gonna We had it where the contractor was gonna do the plans for the...
Micropiles.
The micropods, right. That's what I'm getting. They were gonna do it.
It was called, it's called a designated design.
Okay.
It happens sometimes in exterior wall with wind loads and stuff. The, the architect engineer will, will give a designated design and say, "Mr. Drywall Contractor, you go and design your exterior walls." This time, he said, "Mr. General Contractor, we want you to go and design these micropiles." So, he would hire a micropile foundation contractor, and they would go and come back and say, and they would have probably come back and said, "You don't need 881 of them. If you, you would need 154." But discussions are, we'd rather have it in a competitive bid situation rather than getting 75 cents on the dollar.
Okay. Let's see, what else I got here? Okay, Mosley, the contractor was, was gonna design them, the contractor. And now Ben's Mosley's taking it back over. Will, will Mosley be doing the design on these piles?
Yes, the design is complete, yeah.
They'll, they'll, they're gonna take it and run with it.
They've got a consultant doing the design.
They'll be the only one be doing that then. Okay. Has any, how long ago did soil test? When did that show up?
That's a hard question. See, I don't know the date. The soils bearing, the soils reports are probably about a year old. There's two of them.
Yeah.
And you did one, and then you amend, you did an amendment or revision to that one. And I, I don't have the dates with me.
Yeah, we did one with nine. It was around the, it was around the property on Allison Street. But I guess this one would probably might be on Allison Street, too. I just wonder, I didn't know about that, that we had done that, so.
Well, you did that prior to us being on board. So, it's been quite a while ago.
I found out about it when I got, saw the invoice on, we had paid to have it done. That's when, that's when I found out about it. But that's one thing I got. Let me see. I'll come back to you in a minute on this other. I don't want to take up all the time.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Well, I guess you got me back then. Nobody else gonna, nobody else knows everything that's going on about it. So, I guess I'll just come, on the, on the sales tax.
Yes, sir. I'm not a tax attorney.
I know, I know. But it, has, has other people done that? Have they bought, have they bought sales and then?
I've been around for a while, and I've seen, the wildest one I ever saw was, what county? Putman County built an EMS. And they contracted with a company I was pre, they're no longer in business, Rittenbach Constructors. And they told us, "We're not paying sales tax on it." And we kept saying, "I don't understand how you cannot pay sales tax on everything." And so, we, there was a clause in the, as, we were a general contractor. And we put a clause in there saying, "We're not taking responsibility. If you, if we get charged with sales tax, you have to pay it." So, that's kind of the wildest one I've seen. I've seen, we, in the past, we, and I'm talking about this company I worked for before, churches have taken advantage of sales tax by buying the materials direct. Private colleges can do that. And so, I've seen it happen before where they're going. What, what we found out here is that if we could save the sales tax, but somebody's got to pay the use tax. So, that money gets back into the job anyway. So, if you're going to put the money back in that job, there's no use us taking the risk of something happening during shipment. We get it too early, and the contractor's not ready for it, and we have to store it. I'm talking about us, have to store it. Or we get it too late, and the contractor comes back and says, "You're delaying me," and that's expensive. So, we thought it was best, if we can't realize that big number in the savings, to let the contractor, general contractor, be responsible for the, all the responsibility of the sales.
The sales tax, somebody's gonna pay for it. Either at the beginning or at the end.
Unless you're a church or a private college, it looks like.
That's right. The state's gonna get their money. Okay, that's, that's what I've said all along. Somebody's gonna, somebody's gotta pay for it. Although, if, if the contractor pays for it, they just gonna pass that on to us.
It would be in their bid.
It's gonna, it's gonna come, we're gonna end up paying for it sooner or later, somewhere along the line.
Right. It should be, it should have, if they were astute, it would have been in their bid, as used tax.
Any other questions? Mr. Pettit?
Appreciate your comment.
And I plan on being here whenever you need me, but at least once a month? Is that what we want to do?
I, I think so, yes.
And if needed, anytime. Okay.
We'll let you know whether it'll be a committee meeting or a general commission meeting.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Chairman, Honored. At this time, we will receive general public
Winholden 8150, West Point Drive. All this COVID money y'all getting, that comes from the federal government. Who pays the taxes on that? We do. Where's that money going? I'd like to have it in writing where all that money's gonna go, and who it's gonna help, and who's gonna get it. Can I have that in writing, Chairman Shipley?
Any other comments? Here in Noah, okay, we've got two other people.
Barney Ballington, 317 Stubblefield Street, Whitesburg. Well, the micropiling situation brings me to another concern. They figured out now that they can do with less pilings to cut on cost. But how does that cut on the structure of the building? You know, people say to me all the time that this jail's a done deal. And my reply to that is, nothing's a done deal until it's a done deal and the doors are open. And then people say, "Well, you've already got a million, $2 million invested in it," that may be. But I would rather take a loss of a million or $2 million and come out with a, a better and more economical solution to this jail than to keep going with this biesko we've got. And that's what it's gonna be. That's, I mean, every meeting, that's what it's turning into. There's just all this change going on, and nobody seems to know what's going on. I don't see how the jail can be built at this rate.
Linda Noe, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. Appreciate Mr. Pettit being here. He kind of proved the point of the chaos. This has been, we suddenly find out we can save money, which is good. Did you ever think what you might save if you had a 15-minute presentation? Or a week to assemble information independently about the one-level jail that the sheriff prefers that is safer and requires less staff? Now, you can say it doesn't. You can say that all day long. But until you get the facts put together independently from someone, you don't know what it would do. And as I said, if, if we can, if Mosley and Pettit and the geotechnical person, after it's already been put out to bid, start looking at things and suddenly realize, "Wow, we shouldn't do this. There's a better way." There may be a completely better way, which would be a one-level jail, save $30 million, have a safer jail. So, why do you keep barreling down this path with total incompetence from the mayor's office? I will just say it. And you know it. It's evident. You see it. You've seen it for the entire last year with the commissioning services, with the project manager, with the architect for the Hale House, with LaBelle for the Realtor, with the sales tax, with the micropiles. You can spin it, and it sounds good. And, and I'm glad we, that we are saving money, if that's the case. But why did we get to this point and not know about the micropiles? Not know about the sales tax? And what else don't we know? Please, get the facts instead of going on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Rob Burke, 720 White Oak Circle. So, a couple of thoughts. Sorry, first time here. So, sorry if my schedule's not allowed me to do so. On section nine, it was really interesting to me how we were given specifics as to what item five and six were going to in regards to a printer and security cameras. However, the other items were just chatted through without any actual discussion of what those were. And I agree that the people are interested in how this money is being used and where it's going to. So, I would be very interested to not only hearing that, but having that written documentation so that we can maintain that and view that for ourselves, excuse me. And as mentioned with Mr. Pettit's discussion, it's great to have an opportunity to save some money. According to my simple math here, I count a little, 2 million here, 878,000, 1.2, it looks like a possible $4 million of savings, plus an estimate 30-day construction time savings, possibly $5 million of savings. But as already been mentioned several times, if we look at other opportunities and other potential designs, you're not looking at saving $5 million by doing this design alone, but possibly much more. And the community is much more concerned about what you're doing with this, what you're doing with their money. And it is becoming a very concerning opportunity, which people are wondering why you guys have dug your heels in so much. Who is benefiting from this? Because it's not the people, and that's the people's money. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Karen Arwood, 1501 Eller Road. And once again, those of you as commissioners that have not, or weren't, either weren't commissioners, or no opportunity or whatever to even go down to Coffee County to see the pod situation that they do have, I personally have taken the time, and I have gone down. I've seen it. Very, very impressive. And it's, it's very different to see it in person than if you're not accustomed to looking at blueprints. And even if you are accustomed to looking at blueprints still yet, seeing it in person makes a lot more sense. And I think there was a kind of discussion within the group that if those of you that have not gone down, and I know that there are several of you, that we, we as a concerned citizens group would be more than willing to even pay for your, for your gas down and back to Coffee County. That is how strongly we feel for you to actually lay eyes on an alternative one-level pod system. The, the safety, the viewing, being one floor, they're being able to have enough sta, the staffing, just the design effects, and aids, adds to their being able to reduce the staffing. And I, I implore, please, those of you that haven't actually seen this design that we have talked about and brought up to you guys for, for well over a year, take us up on our offer and go down and actually see it for yourself. Please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Tony Strazulo, East Louise Avenue. So, these pylons that we're putting in, it's gonna save us money, it's gonna save us time. Obviously, it needs to be done in this location because the location isn't adequate for the normal design of a foundation. Also, I don't know how many times these pylon systems fail, and when they do fail, what type of issues are caused by the failure of this on a facility that's gonna be built like this with the pods that are actually being the walls in the building and the strength of it, and not a normal structured building? That has to be looked into. Another thing that needs to be looked into that has been brought up, but I haven't heard anything about it, is what about the fights? What about the fires? What about the floods? What about those issues that we've all brought up numerous times? It's never been talked about, never been asked any questions. We have somebody here that designed it. That would be the person to ask, "What is there to take place in this?" Because right now, we heard last week that if there's a fire or something like that, they go out in the little ball area. Well, are you gonna do that four times, five times the amount of people? You know, you have, there's a big difference of the amount of inmates that you have now and what you're gonna have to deal with. Nobody's ever talked about state inmates, federal inmates. Are we gonna house any of them? Do we plan on housing any of them? We have a federal court right here, and there's inmates being shipped from North Carolina to go to that. They get paid for that. Nobody's said anything along those lines. If, if we were gonna maybe do something other than just house our own people, that would show some kind of more of an income and a reason for a different type of facility. But the facility's structure in itself needs to be looked at because you, none of you have came to answer what we're gonna do if these types of emergencies happen. We have to deal with that. We need to sit back, and we need to take a couple of steps back, and we need to really see where we're at, and not just keep trying to move forward. We need to look at the problems that have been presented and find the issues. So, the people know what to expect. We also have two new people that want to run for sheriff. Have any of you spoken to either of them and found out their ideas? They're the ones that are gonna have to house those people and deal with that on a daily situation. It would be a good idea if maybe you got both of them in there so that you all know what their insight is, their thoughts are, and so that when we decide to vote in, in a month, two months, we know how we want to cast our votes, depending on what they have to say. You all have to do that, not us.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? All right, I want to remind the commissioners of the three meetings that you have on your agenda. First of all, don't forget, May the 25th, the Rules Committee will meet here in this courtroom at 6:00 PM. The April 21st committee meetings are April the 12th at 5:30. These committee meetings are, are where a lot of the background discussion goes on. So, if you really want to know background information, I would encourage you to attend a committee meeting. And then our April commission meeting, Thursday, April the 22nd at 5:00 PM. We would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
You have a motion? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.